All right, we'll call the, we'll call the meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. Will the secretary please call the role?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Ms. Yu-Pegel?
Here.
Chairman Martin?
Here.
Mr. Smetana? Mr. Lucchese? Mr. Bernie?
All right, so we're in a quandary because we don't have a quorum and we cannot act on anything officially. Uh, it was my understanding that the per, the main purpose of this meeting was to have a presentation made to us relating to the accessory dwelling units. So that the, so that our board as a whole would get an understanding of what the proposals were. And then give some feedback to the trustees about how to proceed. So I think what, what we need to discuss is, is it worth making the presentation to the three of us with half of our board absent? Or would we better off trying to reschedule this to a time when we would have a full board or a more full board? So that people could, more people would understand what the proposal is.
I would only ask that the commission consider that we're under contract with CMAP. Um, and they've arranged a panel of experts to come tonight. And this meeting is being recorded and will be available to all members of the ZBA and the public. Uh, after the meeting.
Okay, so you, Jerry, and are you, are you, you ready to proceed to have the presentation made? With the hope that the other board members will, uh, take the time to, to look at it on, on tape?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay.
Yeah, and Chair, if I could just make a brief comment about the Open Meetings Act issue? Yeah, so under the Illinois Open Meetings Act, the ZBA is allowed at a notice meeting where you don't have a quorum to still discuss what's on your agenda. You cannot take any action, so you won't be acting on the minutes, you won't be providing direction on this matter, which is another agenda item. Instead, you can have the conversation, receive the presentation, and then adjourn. That's the effect of not having a quorum.
Okay. So, you want to introduce the presenters and let them, um, make their presentation?
Sure. Uh, Jacob, why don't I turn it over to you to introduce your team and panel? Uh, we have two individuals here from, uh, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning who, uh, have assembled a panel for us. Uh, and Jacob, if I could turn it over to you, we can see you on our TV screens here. Uh, and Jamie, when you're ready, I can make you the host so that you can, uh, present the PowerPoint presentation. I just need you to unmute yourself then.
Uh, we are ready to rock.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, yeah, we do have a PowerPoint, we, let me know when, when you've got that up.
Sure, let me make Jamie the host, just give me one second. All right, Jamie, I've tossed it over to you.
Okay, can you see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
Or our presentation, I should say.
Yeah.
All right, fantastic. Uh, well, thanks so much. Uh, we are very excited to be with you tonight, uh, talking about accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs. Uh, tonight's going to be an introduction to the topic of accessory dwelling units, so as you can see from our slide here, we're calling it ADUs 101. So my name is Jake Side, and I'm a senior planner at, uh, CMAP, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. I'm leading this project with Jamie Jackson, who is also a senior planner at CMAP. And we are very pleased tonight to be joined by, uh, local experts on ADU policy and regulations. Craig Fowler from the Village of Oak Park, Sarah Flax from the City of Evanston, and David Schwartz, a local builder from Chicago Granny Flats. So we'll provide a more thorough introduction to our expert panel a bit later, but first, let's jump into our agenda for today. So first, we're going to find out what accessory dwelling units are and their role in addressing River Forest's housing needs. Uh, next, the plan is, we'll get to our panel discussion with Craig, Sarah, and David to understand their experiences permitting and building ADUs. Uh, and finally, the goal was to, uh, do our workshop where we'll walk through some of the key decision points in allowing ADUs in town. Uh, and I, we can navigate those waters when we get to that point of whether we can get feedback or not from the ZBA. On the next slide. Uh, you know, before we jump into all of that, though, just a little bit of background on CMAP. So who is CMAP? Well, we are the Regional Planning Agency for Northeastern Illinois. We represent seven counties and 284 municipalities around Chicago. And you may be familiar with our regional comprehensive plan, which is called ON2 2050. The three principles of ON2 2050 are resilience, inclusive growth, and prioritized investment. And we've learned that these three principles have quite a visit, quite a bit of resonance with the work being done here in River Forest. One of the ways that CMAP helps to implement the goals of our comprehensive plan is by partnering with communities like River Forest. And through our local technical assistance program, we complete projects that support strategic economic development, build local government capacity, and support sustainable development. Next slide. So that's who we are. Uh, so what's an accessory dwelling unit? Well, as many of you already know, an accessory dwelling unit is a second, secondary dwelling unit on a single-family residential lot. They are referred to by a number of names, uh, commonly as a granny flat or a coach house or an in-law suite. And they tend to be smaller, independent dwellings with a full kitchen and bath. Accessory dwelling units can take many forms. Uh, as you can see here from this slide, the separate living spaces can be located within the home, such as a basement apartment. Attached to the home, such as a garage apartment, or detached from the home, such as a backyard cottage. Uh, the images on this slide show some examples of detached ADUs. On the left is a unit, uh, above a garage. In the middle is a standalone cottage. And on the right is a coach house way in the back of, of the photo, you can see that, yeah, perfect, thanks, Jamie. And then on the next slide here, these are, uh, these images provide examples of attached and internal ADUs. So a common type of ADU in the Chicago area is the basement or garden unit. So you can see here, the image in the middle is actually a photo of Jamie's son in front of a garden unit, uh, in their neighborhood. So they are quite prevalent. So that's what they look like. But why is River Forest interested in, in ADUs now? So our guiding light here is the village has recently adopted affordable housing. As you're all aware, the plan states that the village should explore ways to allow accessory dwelling units. As a jumping off point, the plan states that ADUs can be accommodated as a conditional use in either the R1 or R2 zoning districts. And, uh, now with a little bit of background there, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie on why ADUs might be a good fit for River Forest.
Hi, good evening, members of the board. Um, as Jake said, my name is Jamie Jackson, I'm a senior planner at CMAP. And in the next few slides, we'll go through some of the reasons why ADUs may be a good fit for this community. As well as introduce characteristics of ADUs that can be customized to meet the needs of River Forest. As noted in the village's affordable housing plan, the village is fully developed. Approximately 70% of the village's developed land is zoned R1 and so R2, consisting of single-family detached homes that provide the essence of River Forest's character. And as shown in the slide, the development of new housing units has remained relatively flat over the years. ADUs provide an opportunity to add housing units while maintaining its single-family character. So just a, a point, several of the next slides were provided by Orange Spot LLC, who partnered with CMAP, the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and AARP to host an event called Granny Flat Academy in 2019. So this is a area that is, um, a big topic in, in the region. Um, and as you can see here, there's a lot of familiarity with ADUs, even if you don't know it yet. Um, they've been around for centuries and were a common housing option in communities throughout the country. Uh, they've even been featured in pop culture. Um, I grew up with, uh, Uncle Jesse and Aunt Becky's attic apartment, as well as Oscar the Crouch's, uh, attached ADU. ADUs are adaptable, and as you can see in this slide, as an example, a young fi, family might move into a property that has a principal dwelling unit, a, a single-family house, and an ADU that they rent out. As their family grows, they take over both spaces, and as they age and they don't need as much space, they downsize, they move into the ADU, and they rent out the principal structure. And this goes into multi-generational housing. Um, ADUs offer an opportunity for multi-generational housing, allowing seniors to age in place or college grads to get their bearings. Um, in fact, a 2017 report in partnership with ULI of ADUs in Portland, Vancouver, and Seattle, found that nearly half of ADUs are rented to someone they know or someone within arm's length. Another thing to consider is changing demographics. Over the years, family size have shrunk, but houses have gotten a lot bigger. In the last few years, however, we have noticed a bit of a shift where there is demand for smaller housing sizes. Especially as we see, uh, the silver tsunami, as it's called, of folks that are looking to downsize. And next, we get into affordability. By nature, ADUs, which are smaller than the principal housing structure, can be more affordable than a single-family home on its own. They also offer an opportunity for older residents to maintain their homes and age in place through revenue received from rent. Um, the image shown here is actually an ADU under construction near my parents' house in Northern California. Um, the state of California actually passed legislation in 2017, making ADUs legal statewide. And again, going back to that aging in place, uh, River Forest, like many communities in the Chicago region and nationwide, is getting older. The median age in River Forest in 2010 was 38.3, and as you can see here, in 2020, it registered at 41.3. So going back to the adaptability, ADUs do offer an, an opportunity for older residents to remain in their property. Not necessarily in the principal structure, but maybe they want to retire in an ADU. And just to provide a little bit of an outlook of what's going on in the Chicago region. The municipalities in blue are those that permit ADUs in some form. The ones in the beautiful yellow color that I chose, um, are ones that are under consideration, including River Forest right now. But there's a lot of other considerations, uh, for ADUs as listed here. The idea of allowing a single-family, uh, of a additional unit on a single-family lot is easy enough, but there are many considerations. Um, including how it occupies a lot, how the units are administered, and the general feasibility of construction based on these factors. And a thing to consider is that just because ADUs are permitted does not mean that every homeowner is going to jump on the chance to build them. As our panelists will discuss, Oak Park, since they started allowing ADUs as an accessory, uh, as an accessory structure on properties. Have had less than 10 building permits issued since 2017. Evanston has had about 10 since 2019. And then just going back to my parents' example, I've been trying to convince my father to build an ADU in my backyard, or their backyard, I should say, that I grew up in. And I was trying to say, hey, we can move in, I can bring my two sons, it'll be great, uh, we can all live happily ever after, and mom can cook meals. And my dad just turned to me and said, absolutely not. So you have to have a motivated homeowner or property owner to do this as well. Um, the next slide just provides some examples of some ADU, uh, regulations throughout the region, and they do vary a little bit. And that's, again, customized to the needs of each community. And then I will, uh, let's see, I'm actually doing an exception. So with that, uh, we are going to start our panel discussion, uh, where we can dive a little bit more into some of these concepts. So I would like to introduce our panel and thank them so much for coming out this evening. First, David Schwartz, he is one of the founders of Chicago Granny Flats LLC. He founded Chicago Granny Flats alongside another developer and an architect. And the company specializes in building upscale, high-quality, and cost-effective detached ADU coach houses and backyard cottages in a fast format. With over 100 years of combined experience designing, developing, and building commercial and residential properties throughout the country. The team is uniquely qualified to live on the promise of adding units seamlessly into the existing built environment. Next, we have Craig Fowler. Craig has been the village planner for the Village of Oak Park for almost 19 years, where he manages the planning division, including planning, zoning, and historic preservation. Prior to his employment with Oak Park, Craig held positions as the Assistant Planning Director and Senior Planner for the Village of Barrington, Illinois, Planner for the Village of Lombard, and Planner for the City of Belvedere and Boone County, Illinois. He graduated with a Bachelor of Science from Iowa State University, and is a member of the American Planning Association and American Institute of Certified Planners. Craig is also a member of the Congress for the New Urbanism and Urban Land Institute. Among Craig's notable professional accomplishments, he's a lead accredited professional and member of Lambda Alpha International, a land economic society. And last but certainly not least is Sarah Flax. Sarah has worked in housing policy program development and management for over 20 years. As Housing and Grants Manager for the City of Evanston, she is responsible for the development and implementation of the city's affordable housing strategies, including inclusionary housing and ADUs. And use of the Affordable Housing Fund to address Evanston's affordable housing goals. She manages approximately 2 million annually in entitlement grants from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. And then consolidated plan process that guides the use of those funds to address the needs of Evanston's lower-income residents. In addition, she is responsible for planning and implementing programs and services with over 2.5 million in CVBGCV and ESGCV CARES Act funding. And 1.3 million in home ARP and the American Rescue Act to support Evanston's recovery from COVID-19. Prior to joining the City of Evanston, Sarah was the Development Director at McGraw YMCA and raised over 2 million annually to support its SRO housing, youth programs, and scholarship, as well as 5 million for facilities expansion. She also has responsibility for marketing and youth programs. So, that said, uh, welcome, panelists, glad to have you here.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
So we are going to dive right into questions, and this one goes for, to Craig and Sarah first. And, uh, you can each respond. Why did your communities decide to permit ADUs? Craig, let's start with you.
Okay, thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, basically, the reason the Village of Oak Park went down that path was kind of twofold. Um, back in 2015, 2016, we started looking at redoing our zoning code, uh, was readopted in 2017. And during the discussion of the zoning ordinance, we knew that we had a historic fabric that had, um, several coach houses within the community. That were either being used legally or illegally used for storage, they were underutilized. Um, and we thought that would be a good opportunity to reestablish those, uh, uses within the village. One, because we wanted to make things a little bit more, uh, conforming versus non-conforming. But we also looked at the idea of affordable housing in the community. Oak Park has a plethora of affordable housing units in apartments and condos, but we don't have a lot in their single-family districts. So we looked at the opportunity to, um, initiate the coach house program, uh, with, uh, the idea that we could create affordable housing units within our single-family zoning districts. So we created a, um, an amendment to the code that, um, looks at trying to incorporate co, uh, coach houses into the community on certain, on certain levels. We wanted to see how it would function, first of all, so we put some parameters around it. We wanted to make sure that you only build one on a property that had a single-family home, and that it had to be a certain size piece of property, 6,500 square feet. We did get, um, uh, some advice on how coach houses should look. We wanted to make sure that they comport to the architecture of the home that they were, um, adjacent to, so that is one of the requirements. And then, in the, um, code for accessory dwelling, accessory, you, uh, buildings, uh, we had the provision that you can't be 20 feet, any more than 20 feet tall, measured at the midpoint of the roof. So we kept that provision in there for the, uh, coach houses as well. So it doesn't look any larger than what you would have, um, be allowed for, uh, a garage. Um, so we wanted to kind of keep those on the same plane.
Evanston has some of the same reasons, um, as Oak Park and, um, other communities that have been discussed about wanting to get, um, rental units and smaller units in largely single-family zoning. But we also had a lot, well, a lot, quite a few, existing coach house structures. About 141 of them is our best count. And we had this interesting, there were legal non-conforming properties that were allowed to rent theirs out legally. Because they had been renting them since before there had been the zoning saying that you couldn't rent them. And not only did that. You know, where people could build more coach houses, and they just couldn't rent it to a non-family member of the primary structure, of the primary unit. And one of the things that also, um, did was really create a kind of inequitable si, situation that really wasn't something that looks, is something we wanted to continue either. And most of the properties that had these coach houses that were allowed to rent them out were also our biggest, oldest houses, um, in some of our wealthiest parts. And one of the greatest needs we had was to also give flexibility to less affluent, um, property owners to do more with their property. Because we had the problem of people being potentially pushed out, especially as they age in place and are on fixed incomes, because they can't afford to pay their property taxes and stuff like that. But, so we didn't start by having to allow coach houses to be built, because as I said, we, they could be. Our first step was to legalize renting them to a non-family member. And, um, so in a way, that maybe seemed less threatening, because the structures were already there, and quite frankly, some people were renting them out illegally. So we did an amnesty program where they could fess up and register their coach house, and we would inspect it, and we would measure the rooms, or they would measure the rooms and give us a floor plan. And we would say the max occupancy for that structure, and, um, if they were going to rent it to non-family, then they had to register it, just like one of our other rentals. So kind of different approach.
And as you were going through the, the process to allow non-family members, and I know Evanston has also amended the code. Uh, what is, what's been the biggest concern in the community, and how has that been addressed?
Um, for Oak Park, from the village standpoint, it wasn't necessarily concerned, because we saw the need for this type of use in our single-family neighborhoods. Um, but when we were going through the process of updating our zoning code, we went out to the public to talk about it. And the feedback we got from some of the public members was that they felt that by allowing coach houses, and that's the only thing we were looking at at the time. Allowing coach houses would create a, um, a higher dense, uh, single-family neighborhood, where they wanted to keep it more single-family related and not, not double up on lots with, uh, coach houses. And that wasn't a big concern, but it was something that we heard from a few in the public. Um, as Jamie had mentioned earlier, we have not seen, um, uh, everyone running to the, uh, building department to build one. Um, so we think that it is a good, uh, foray into the affordable housing world. Um, and we are going to probably be looking at more, um, of, of the ADU options in the future.
Well, like Craig and Oak Park, we did a lot of outreach and discussion. In fact, we were one of the, um, sites for, um, the Granny Flat University, um, that were put on by, um, the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus and AARP. And, um, and we really just tried to get people talking to each other about, uh, we were also going through a planning process, uh, for affordable housing. And one of our, um, we were having small groups, one-on-ones, just talking to people about Evanston needs more housing. What do you think about this strategy? What do you think about this strategy? And that really helped, because people, especially when we could get people from different parts of town that had different perspectives, together to talk about it. And one person would say like, wow, I don't know, I think it's going to cause this problem, and somebody would say, well, you know, we have one down the block from us. And so you really just got, uh, you got people talking about it. And, um, I remember one person saying, you know, because to another, because in, in a discussion, they were saying, well, you know, it could really change everything, they're going to be all our neighborhood, what could happen? And, and, yeah, the other person said, William. Who in the neighborhood do you think is going to run out and do one of these right away? And they all kind of looked at each other, and it's like, hmm, maybe that's not such a big worry. And we actually, we, we are a little different, um, in that we do not restrict ADUs, um, or coach houses to, um, only R1 and R2. We actually allow them on any property that has a residential structure, even if it's in, uh, non-residential zoning, so. Um, and part of that is because we already had some of those, and you know, it's really hard to tell people who might want to do that sort of thing on their own property, when there's another one someplace in town where it's legal non-conforming, that, no, 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 we'll never let you do it, you're in the wrong zoning, which was applied after the other things were built. So joys of being an old-built community, right?
Thank you. So now we've heard a little bit from developing the regulatory end of it, and we're going to flip onto the other side to, to David, um, who actually does build them. And as a builder, David, what would you say is the biggest hurdle to developing an ADU in a community?
Well, it's interesting, because I, I think, you know, both Sarah and Craig are right, people aren't jumping out, you know, there's not a massive rush. Although, um, you know, we've had a lot of interest, uh, I would say we've probably been contacted by 60 in the last six months, 60 serious inquiries, but we have, um, four contracts. So there's, there's, there's definitely a lot of people who kind of poke around at it, but not that many people who pull the trigger, uh, at, at least so far. Um, but logistically speaking, you know, provided that a property qualifies, then you look at, well, what are the things that could prevent that property from actually doing it? And certainly, you know, utility connections, um, can be a big obstacle. Um, generally, municipalities are allowing it if you have maybe one-inch or copper, uh, water service, but if you have an older-led, that water service, they may want you to replace it, and that could be cost prohibitive. Um, so the, the, the sewer and water connections are probably one of the trickiest aspects of it, but other than that, it's, you know, and I'm speaking strictly about detached accessory dwelling units, coaches, and coach houses, or backyard cottages, and, um, they're expensive. And, you know, nobody has a desperate, I shouldn't say nobody, because there are some people who, you know, have multi-generational housing or are planning for it. Um, have dealt with people who have maybe a special needs kid or some other unique situation, where an ADU is really an ideal situation, where people can share a property, they can be close to one another, but still have some separation and privacy. So if you do run into people, some people who may have a sense of urgency, rather than that, it's sort of a luxury good, uh, that nobody necessarily needs, and it's a pretty big ticket item. So people have to turn around and figure out how they're going to pay for it. Um, and I can say that for homeowners, there actually are some pretty good options available. There are some companies and mortgage brokers that can find, uh, financing that will allow you to either do a cash-out refinance or refinance you right into a new 30-year fixed, you know, conforming home loan that, you know, with a great interest rate. That will operate just like a regular home loan would, or a loan on a small apartment building, like two-flats and three-flat owners, whether they live in or not, are able to get into the city. But and then for investors, they can typically sort of find financing, maybe from their own lender or, or refinance another property or something like that. But I would say the biggest obstacle is cost, it's expensive.
What, what is the average cost for a typical ADU?
So our prices, so I, I think a basement ADUs, which we don't deal in, can I think be done for probably seventy five thousand dollars possibly? You know, depending on the existing conditions. Our detached coach houses, and they're a little bit more expensive because ours are all so far at least above a garage. So you're building a brand new garage and then a unit on top of it. So, you know, our prices start at a hundred and seventy thousand. And that's, we're operating pretty lean, kind of an introductory pricing at, at that. So, you know, closer to two hundred thousand dollars realistically, I think for people to get into. Now I'll say that if somebody's going to be renting it out and they can get good long-term financing on it, the economics really do make sense. So people really can get significant cash flow from it, from not a tremendous investment, provided they have maybe some equity in their home or they're working with a lender that will take into account the added value from the ADU, you know, in the, the loan amount that they're willing to make. So it, it really can help people afford to stay in their homes, afford increased property taxes. So I do think that there can be significant benefits from people who can rent them out in, in addition to obviously additional family members and additional living space.
I mean, that kind of gets into, I want to go back to Craig because Oak Park currently only permits detached ADUs. Is there, what was the discussion around that? And I know you said you guys are possibly considering attached, but what was that initial discussion? And why did you, why did the, the community ultimately decide to just stay with the detached?
Well, we wanted to, we wanted to stay with Coach House because it's historically part of the fabric of the Village of Oak Park. We thought we could mirror that or marry that with affordability and bring that more into the single family districts. But ADUs weren't really in the, the news as much back then. So we wanted to kind of test the waters a little bit. And that was the way to do it because we could bring, you know, from history forward and re, reestablish that. But we do want to look at other types of ADUs. We, we get inquiries all the time about in-law apartments and whether you can do that, convert your basement to your attic or add on. And actually, we're going to be meeting with the Oak Park Plan Commission in June to talk about potential amendments to the zoning ordinance to add additional ADU types within the, within the code. It's just a conversation at this point, we're not drafting any language yet. But we want to have a conversation with them to see what they think. So we're going to be looking at all, all types of ADUs, attic conversions, basement conversions, additions and other standalone opportunities that, that aren't associated with the garage or even garage conversions potentially. So those, those are the things we're going to be talking about. And I, I think, I think, I think that's a good path for the village to go in the future. You know, we did pass some affordable housing or inclusionary housing ordinance and the, our village board actually met and one of their goals is to look at the affordable housing aspect of our ordinance. And so this might be, this might tie in very well with that.
Right. And I guess kind of similarly, Sarah, now that Evanston has had a chance to test the waters, as Craig put it, I know there have been several amendments or at least one amendment to the ordinance. Do you foresee any other amendments? And, and can you talk about the evolution of, of why the ordinance has been amended?
Well, we wanted all along to allow other types, but you know, it's the toe in the water way that gets people a little more comfortable sometimes than trying to do something that's quote radical. But one of the things that we have and probably a lot of communities have this right now. You have people who have expanded their homes and basically they've built out to their total lot coverage. I mean, we regulate our residential districts basically on lot coverage and in permeable surface. And so if you still had plenty of backyard and, you know, hadn't paved everything, you could have a standalone, a detached ADU. But if you had a bigger house that limited your ability to add on, you couldn't, or have a separate, a separate standalone ADU, you, you couldn't do that. But you might have a huge house that you can't, you don't use completely. So why not let people build something out inside, inside? And so we regulate that based on, again, relationship to the primary unit, even if it's in the same building. And the ADU must be smaller. The only exception is if you're building out an entire floor or, or a basement. You know, in other words, if, if you had a ranch house with a basement and you built the entire basement as an ADU, you would not have to make it smaller than the, the, the floor plate of the primary unit. But the, again, there's still generally the goal of keeping it accessory smaller. So it doesn't feel like it's just turning everything into two flats. But also our plan commission added a requirement that you could not divide with, with, this is with standalones, you could not divide your lot and create a, another standalone property that was very small on a smaller lot. So we did some things like that. But, you know, we just approved the broader ADU options in the very end of September. And this isn't the greatest period of time to be getting a lot of people trying to do new and interesting things. We do plan to do a, an amnesty for people renting internal ADUs that they haven't told us about, that we think are existing. But frankly, we are not pursuing that right at the moment because the last thing we want to do is anything that's going to displace people when we're still dealing with the effects of a pandemic. But we really have had a lot of enthusiasm about, about these sorts of options. And ADUs, people got comfortable enough with that, that they actually, we also introduced some other affordable housing related zoning changes, which was to allow a bunch of small, nonconforming lots to be built on for a single family homes on smaller lots that were nonconforming with certain restrictions that in many cases were similar to the lot setbacks and the side setbacks and things like that, that we are using for our standalone, our, you know, physically separate ADUs or standalone. So it kind of gets people a little more comfortable with an idea. You know, sometimes, you know, if you've got a relatively small property, you know, structure, maybe a three foot setback from the side, you know, side yard isn't such a big deal when you, when you have a two and a half story house that feels not quite so good to other people. So we tried to look at a lot of different ways to just get people to think about things differently from what their first reaction is when you say, oh, we're going to allow you to build, you know, ADUs in your backyard and things like that. And I, I think that that, and evolution sometimes works better than trying to do everything all at once. We have run into some of those challenges that David was talking about though, like replacing lead service line, increasing the water, the size of the water service line, especially because right now we require sprinkling all new residential construction. So I gotta tell you, sprinkling an ADU, I don't think is necessarily the best way to address potential fire hazards because, but you know, it, it's, that's what we have right now. And, and those are some of the challenges that you can get into.
Yeah, it's an interesting approach, kind of the dipping your toe in the water approach, incremental approach to see what works. Back to David, I know you touched upon this a little bit, but can you discuss a little bit more the, I know you, you focus on coach houses. Is there a benefit to detached versus attached? And, and I know previous conversations, we talked about financing mechanisms very, very greatly for the two of them. Can, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so cost, there is, I think, any, anybody making the evaluation, it's going to really be a property by property basis. And, and I think that the basement ADUs, as I can see it, are really more suited to sort of two flats where you see that kind of English basement. You know, and, and that's where, because if it's, if the, if it's a single family home that's built that grade, you know, it's not very, a full basement, you know, ADU is probably unlikely to really get built. There's not great access. So it's really suited for more older homes that were built, you know, with an English basement, that sort of garden level unit that has direct windows to the outside and, and is able to have its own, you know, private entrance. So a lot of it's going to be determined by the actual building and the structure that, that the homeowner or the investor has. And then beyond that, I certainly have talked to people who like, well, I could do one or the other. You know, so certainly I think if you, it's going to cost less money to do a basement or an attic ADU and you're likely going to get less rent for it. And then a coach house with a, you know, a detached ADU with a brand new garage and a, a nice unit above that's got four exposures and lots of sunlight and its own private entrance and direct access. You'll get more rent for it, it's going to cost you more to build. So it's all an economic decision that, that any individual, you know, property owner would, would make. But, you know, I've certainly talked to people, well, maybe I'll duplex it down. So then I won't do the basement ADU or maybe I will. So people just have to kind of feel through that option, you know, on their own. But, but most, a lot of buildings are just simply not going to be suited for an interior basement or attic ADU. You know, they're just not going to have the room, it's not going to lay out. And conversely, a lot of them are just not going to work for a, for a detached ADU either. You know, if it doesn't really have alley access or it doesn't have a big enough side yard to, to get back there for the construction. There's a lot of factors and, you know, like on the West Coast, they're building a lot of kind of prefab modular ones and they'll stick them in with a crane. You know, they'll go over the primary house and drop it back there. That's not going to work in a place like Evanston and Oak Park, where we have these big mature trees. You, you could never drop a, a container back, back into most of those backyards. You know, our, our approach was very specifically to say the footprint of every one of our buildings is the size of a garage. It's either a two-car garage or three-car garage or a four-car garage. And you can kind of see, is it appropriate? Do you have a detached garage or a place for a detached garage in your yard? And then one of our buildings might be appropriate. But it's largely economic and feasibility.
And what a note, generally, building above an existing garage is not a good way to go because the foundation isn't going to be right. And so that's one of the things we heard a lot of at first, oh, can I build one on top of my existing garage?
You and me both. And the answer is, is really no. I don't even want to, I don't even want to try.
Right, right. Garage conversions may be able to be worked out in some situations, but that's again, and that's, that's the other thing is you have to look at what your parking requirements are. And one of the things that we have in our ADU, in our last ADU amendments is no parking required for the ADU. You can't displace the existing parking. You know, in other words, you couldn't rip down your two-car garage and just build and a detached ADU unless you had off-street parking. You know, it doesn't have to be covered, but you didn't, you don't have to add another parking space for the ADU. And that actually, I think is huge because parking, if you require additional parking with an ADU, whether it's detached or attached, you're also starting to use up your lots differently and, and probably paving over more of your green space, which is not necessarily a good idea either. So it's a balancing act, it's always a balancing act.
We have the same provision in Oak Park that you do not need a parking space for the coach house unit, but you do have to maintain parking for the principal structure.
And Chicago is the same way as well, the city.
Excellent point about parking because communities all over the country, no matter what, parking is always a, a top consideration. So I'm glad you guys were able to discuss that. Last question, then we're going to turn it over and I guess we'll, we'll discuss how we want to move forward after this. But to kind of wrap up, what advice would you give the community of River Forest as it looks to develop an ADU ordinance? Craig, we'll start with you.
Well, I think you have to understand what the demand is and what, what the community is looking for. What, what's the purpose of the ADU? Is it really to be used for elderly parents or kids coming back from college or, you know, some, something related to the family or is it something that you want to rent out? And I think if, if it's something that you want to rent out, it could be any of the options that we've discussed, discussed tonight. But one thing I, I do want to point out is that you, you probably should pay attention to the Fair Housing Act as far as how you rent out the, how you want to rent out the, the units, just to make sure that you're not discriminating or violating any of those provisions within, within that act. But it, you know, from Oak Park standpoint, we, we did, we just stepped into it a little bit to see how, how the community would react to it. And like we've said before, there hasn't been a lot of, of interest in, in doing a coach house. As David said, they're very expensive to do. But we're hoping that maybe some of these other options that we are going to be looking at might be a little bit more affordable. So those are the things you, you may want to think about as well as you go forward.
And, and David, we'll, we'll shoot to you next and we'll wrap up with Sarah. David, what would be some advice you would give to the community as it looks to develop an ADU ordinance?
Allow coach houses everywhere. No, I, I will say that, but I honestly would say, don't be too restrictive off the bat because you'll see, that way you'll kind of, you'll, it'll allow you guys to see where the demand and the feasibility really is. Whereas if you kind of try to predetermine where it should go and, and what kind of lots and what size lots, then you sort of restrict it and you don't really get to see what organically would, would kind of happen. And I don't think you have to worry about it happening too much and destroying neighborhoods and throwing the whole density off. You know, it's, it's really not going to happen. So I would, I would say go in, follow a little bit more of the Evanston model, be a little bit more permissive. And then, and then if, then if you problems start up, then you can kind of pull it back and address the issues that have happened after, rather than trying to anticipate all these problems and then coming up with something that's so restrictive that nothing gets. And I'm a developer, so that's, that's my background.
But I think there's a lot of, of truth in that. One of the things I remember from our Granny Flat University, and this was Eli Spavick, who is one of the, you know, Orin Spot people who is incredibly knowledgeable. I walked him around the east part of Evanston. He was fascinated by it. One of our coach houses actually ended up in one of his, it might actually be in the ADUs of, ABCs of ADUs. But he said, try to minimize regulation of things that aren't really going to make the difference. I mean, there were some horrible examples where you could build a, an ADU of a certain square footage and based on their occupancy per square footage, it actually meant you could never get something that could house more than one person. You know, I mean, it was just like one of those things where you're like, really? Who thought of that one? But, you know, it was an attempt to try to control the size. They didn't want overwhelming things, but they bollixed it up in a way that they couldn't build anything. I mean, if you built a, I don't remember the exact dimensions, but it was something like if you had a nine hundred square foot ADU, it still could only house one person because you had to get to a thousand square feet. I mean, that's, those aren't the numbers, but it was something similar to that, that it was just, it was just crazy. And I also remember hearing that a lot of, of communities that started out early, early in ADUs would do things like say, oh, well, we'll only allow X number per certain geographic area. And I gotta tell you, they just don't pop up like mushrooms. It's just not a concern, especially if you're doing detached ADUs. Because as David said, it's a significant investment. But one of the things that also we talked about is like a lot of communities that had large houses built when there were large families, it's like, well, wait a minute. It's like, well, wait a minute, you've got maybe three or four people at most living in these huge houses. And so if you add a couple in a coach house or an ADU, you probably haven't even gotten to the size of the household that was living there originally. You know, so the whole idea of, of people are wanting different ways to use space and different types of, of, um, ways to live and potentially giving people modest sized properties and rental in areas that we haven't had those options before. Because everything is generally, um, single dwelling unit owner occupied. So I think that it's, um, try to be flexible. And we also got the support of our Realtors because they want greater flexibility in, in the way people can use their properties. And about three blocks west of me, um, a developer, um, purchased a really modest house, enlarged it, made it lovely, but also built a coach house. So it was interesting to see that being built by, um, a developer. And, um, we had a development called Kendall Place, which was where Kendall College used to be and it was torn down. And, um, the neighborhood insisted on having it single family, but they allowed coach houses to be built. But there was this restriction saying they couldn't rent them out. And so it was like, it was kind of one of those things like, what? Um, so again, it's like, I think giving people the ability to use their property over their lifespan, the way, um, we talked about moving family members in renting part of the time is really just more conducive to our changing lifestyles.
Thank you all so much. Wonderful words of advice, speaking to your experience. Um, at this point, we wanted to open it up to members of the board who might have questions for our panelists. Um, I'm going to defer to Corporation Council if, if that is allowable um, to have discussion amongst board members without a quorum.
Yes, they can discuss, they just can't take action or give direction tonight. So if the ZBA members who are present, the three, want to talk, they're free to do so.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions. This is Jerry Dombrowski on the board, uh, just a couple of questions. Uh, probably to the CMAP people, maybe to the people from Evanston and Oak Park. Are there any municipalities in Illinois that have adopted, uh, these units but have limited to only family members and existing structures? So that's one, whether that has been successful, those limitations. And two, how do the property taxes get affected by a new unit? Is it a new tax ID number? Um, or is it like akin to a two flat as far as taxes are concerned?
Well, as far as communities that have restricted it to, I guess, internal would be what we're talking about, not building a new structure. Um, Park Forest has, has done that. Um, and they have a requirement that the property owner must live in the principal dwelling unit or the ADU. It does not, uh, have anything to do with family members that you can rent it out to, no restrictions on that. But the property owner must live on the property. Um, with regard to how successful that's been, that has yet to be determined. Their ordinance is fairly new. Um, we can certainly follow up with them to see if they have issued any permits given, uh, that ordinance.
And then the point about the, uh, tax implications regarding PIN numbers. Uh, there, I don't believe there is another PIN number unless the lot is subdivided in which.
Right. I can tell you a little bit about what we've tried to figure out because it, it is not something that Cook County has really done. The assessor's office has really, um, figured out, I don't think. Um, if you are, I mean, when somebody, whether it's a detached ADU that they're building or they're building out an internal one, um, what gets reported is the permit value. And so the property, you know, the, the permit value is used to, um, increase taxes. But they really haven't, as far as I've been able to determine, figured out what to do when it's rented because they haven't, they don't really have experience with that. It's not allowed on a broad basis here. I know it's something that they're interested in because, um, I've been contacted by the Cook County Assessor's Office. Um, they're interested in a bunch of different things, um, including, um, with inclusionary units. Another thing is how, how does that affect? How should those be assessed? Because that affects their, um, you know, their income generating capabilities. So, um, I don't think we really know, um, completely what's going to happen. But right now it is really seemingly to, in Evanston at least, to be being taxed as a addition or something like that because they aren't tracking at this point whether or not it's rented or not.
Oak Park's the same. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? That's all from the people who are here.
Frank, do you mind if I ask a couple?
No, no, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, in Oak Park in Evanston, um, do you allow any discounts on permit fees to try to, um, incentivize, uh, ADUs?
We do not at this point, no.
Not this time we're talking about it. If, uh, and, and I don't know how quickly it will move or if it will move. If somebody is agreeing to something like a, um, renting at a restricted rent level so that it is income restricted affordable. Um, and we have, um, and that's would be sort of an outgrowth of our inclusionary housing ordinance because those units, we have a centralized waiting list for. And, um, that's where people for those units are, um, drawn from by the develop, by the developers or the property managers. But we would really love to see getting more options for affordable units and income restricted units in, um, other areas. And one of, that's the type of thing we're looking at. Well, could we incentivize it by, um, reducing their upfront costs? But bottom line, that's still not looking like it's a, it's a financially viable thing. So we've got to work harder on that. We're also talking to Ida about ways that we could get financing for, um, ADUs if there were a number of people who wanted to do them at one time and make them affordable. Actually, we are building one affordable ADU. Um, it, it will be income restricted and we're using home funds for it. And it is, uh, one of our, um, affordable housing providers has a two flat and they can build a coach house. And so the current two flat has no parking. Um, it was, it had a coach house originally, but it was in such bad shape that it had to be torn down. Um, it really didn't have a real foundation. Um, so they're going to build a new coach house. Um, and, uh, that will, that unit, that coach house unit will be affordable at 60% of area median for 20 years. So we're getting an income restricted, but, but it's being built with, you know, federal dollars that are affordable housing dollars. So.
Um, I have, I have an idea. It's probably more for, for use. Um, developers could actually fund them as offsite, AR, offsite affordable units. They could subsidize the development on somebody else's property. Obviously the city would have to be involved in terms of where they went. And then you deed it for affordable, the, the property taxes could be limited. Uh, impact of the property taxes for, for those because they're deemed affordable. And then they can, somebody else's, the third party's paying for them because they got to pay it anyway.
Yeah. Interesting thought, but we're, we're trying to look at ways to do things like that because it really is, it really is a challenge. Um, and, um, I think that the more creative ways you think about, the more successful you're going to be in finding what's a right fit for individual communities. Because not all solutions work in all places because of the character of, of the different communities. So, and we have such an interesting mix of different things. I guess we kind of, it's like you cram everything into one seven and a half square mile area and try to figure out what works where. So.
Uh, for either of the communities, do you charge impact fees to the schools on new dwelling units when there are accessory dwelling units?
We don't have impact fees.
We don't either.
Okay.
Are you aware of any municipalities which have added impact fees on people who want to establish ADUs?
Uh, we're not aware of any, uh, just because the demand has been so low, the impact has been very low as well.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, did you say, um, for Evanston and Oak Park, whether these uses are, do they require any kind of zoning entitlement, like a special use or conditional use permit? Or are they allowed as of right?
As of right.
As of right.
Okay. In terms of stormwater impact, do you require that there be any onsite detention? And I know we're kind of getting into the weeds on some engineering components, but how do you address? So in addition to the utility issues, how do you address, um, you know, potentially the creation of more impervious surface and, uh, stormwater?
Well, we address that by saying they can't necessar, they can't exceed the zoning limits on, um, building lot coverage and impervious surface. Um, of course, they can apply for variances for certain amounts of, 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 um, overages. But, you know, that's the way we're looking at doing it right now. So you can't really build more building or cover up more of the lot than the underlying zoning allows.
Yeah, we're the same way. Since we just have coach houses, houses, which is really a, a unit over a garage, it's considered an accessory structure and it has to meet our accessory structure regulations within the zoning code. And we do have lot coverage requirements. And there's no onsite detention. The slots are generally too small to meet MWRD requirements. So we don't, we don't require any, any onsite detention.
That's it for me. Thank you, Frank.
Anybody else have questions?
A member of the public does.
Is there anybody? Is there anybody in, in the, who listened to the presentation, uh, that has any questions for the, uh, the, the, the board that's made the presentation? Mr. Lauber, is there anything you want to ask?
Well, I, actually Frank, I want to ask, I've got some comments to make. I assume I should wait till after they're done. Well, the comments will be positive to help facilitate the process.
Okay. Then we, we would, uh, thank the board, the, the board, the, the presentation that you've made tonight. It gives us something to think about. And, uh, we hope that during this process, if we have questions or need additional information, that you will, uh, work with us and the village to, uh, come up with a viable plan.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we, we are not quite done yet, although we are done with the, uh, X, our panelists. We do actually want to hear from members of the board and, and just kind of get some of your initial thoughts and reactions to what you've heard this evening. Uh, so at this time, I, I as well, I would like to thank members, uh, that came out, uh, the public and, and our esteemed panelists. Thank you so much. And you are free to sign off if you wish or stay on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And Jake will, uh, take over from here and, and lead a discussion amongst the members of the board.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Jamie. Yeah. Um, so we're going to get the PowerPoint back up. Just had three more slides really, um, to talk through. Well, I guess it's four, um, to talk through the remaining uh, big picture issues when it comes to ADU consideration. So you saw this, a version of this slide a little earlier. There's, you know, numerous things to consider when allowing ADUs. And we just spoke about them with your questions a moment ago. You know, the items that we had in mind to talk about in terms of the major decision points um, are things like location, type, occupancy, parking and administration. Uh, you know, from the portable housing plan, location was, uh, discussed as the R1 and R2 districts as a conditional use. Uh, you know, there, there is a world in which accessory dwelling units might make sense in the R3 as well or in other locations in town that have a single family home on the parcel. We talked about type, attached versus detached. Uh, the potential issues with lot coverage came up in the recent conversation. We talked a little bit about occupancy. Uh, Jamie gave the example in, uh, Park Forest where we developed, where CMAP helped them to develop, uh, their current unified development ordinance. There can be a restriction, uh, with an owner occupancy in either the primary unit or the accessory dwelling unit. Or to have no restrictions on occupancy because we have found that it is actually quite difficult to enforce those standards for the ADU. The fourth thing to consider is parking. Uh, as you heard from Evanston and Oak Park, they do not have an additional parking requirement. But in a place like River Forest, people do drive. And then finally, administration, uh, whether the ADU would be a conditional use or allowed by, right? So, uh, you know, I know we don't have a forum, but we'd love to get some feedback from, uh, the ZBA on these issues because the next step in this process is to start creating, uh, a red line of your existing zoning ordinance to put some of these policies into practice. Should we start with location, maybe?
Uh, this is Jerry Dombrowski. I, I think what we need to do is really when we're ready to vote, which is obviously not now, is to have a few ordinances like Oak Parks, Evanston's in front of us. See what we like and see what we don't like. And then, um, put it up for a vote. And then, as you know, we're advisory, then it goes to the village board, the full village board. I think we'd probably have to have ordinances that are in place in front of us. And then see what we like and see what we decide on to vote on and then go from there. I don't know if, uh, obviously there's concerns. I mean, I, I have a house next door to me that I think would probably qualify as a ADU. But I think there's definitely reluctance in River Forest to adopt something like this without some significant limitations. And, uh, that's my view at this point.
Well, Mr. Dombrowski, uh, that's a, a great point. I think the goal here is to create, you know, like as you said, uh, ordinance that is right for River Forest. Um, you know, you've, you've heard a lot from Evanston and Oak Park, which are kind of on the leading edge of this. But taking a look at their code, um, isn't necessarily going to crystallize it for you. What we need to do is, is, um, you know, kind of take these major decision points and get some, um, you know, some real policy umbrella type decisions so that we can put the standards into, into the code itself.
You know, you, your organization puts on a very, uh, practice, uh, performance for us. Are there any organizations that you are aware of and you're willing to tell us about that, that oppose ADUs and make, are willing to make presentations to us on problems that could develop or have developed through a, from use of ADUs that, that we, that, you know, we could have some input from them to, to see if there are concerns and that, that we should be worried about.
I certainly understand your concerns. Um, the village of River Forest contracted with CMAP. for the purpose of implementing the goals of your Affordable Housing Plan. And we're, we're very excited about that, because they parallel the goals of our, our comprehensive plan on G2050. You know, we think that making steps towards making accessory dwelling units a permitted use in town is, is a valuable decision. And I don't think we're aware of any entities that we would recommend that would oppose that.
So just real briefly, I would like to touch on the process. So we do want to get direction from the ZBA at some point regarding potential amendments to the zoning ordinance. If there's additional research or information that you would like to get, you know, we can certainly survey other communities that allow ADUs to assess some of these issues, I know CMAP has provided us with some initial information. If there's additional data that the ZBA would like, we're certainly happy to work with CMAP to get that prepared. What we would like to do is get some initial direction though, from the ZBA, so that we can take that feedback and that input to the Village Board of Trustees before this goes to public hearing. So what we're trying to do is kind of workshop this and roundtable this and come up with where we think this is going. And then take it to the village board, have them take a look at it and weigh in. And then ultimately direct the ZBA to hold a public hearing on potential amendments to the zoning ordinance. The ZBA would then consider those, hold a public hearing, take public testimony, and then make a recommendation for amendments to the zoning ordinance to the Village Board of Trustees. I anticipate that as we go through this process, we will identify a number of areas in the village's zoning ordinance and other related ordinances that may need to be amended. So I see this as a pretty extensive process over the next several weeks. Mr. Lauber has his hand up, I know you can't see him, but I can.
May I speak?
Yeah, go ahead Dan.
Okay. I think that as you've realized, this is more complex than anybody imagined. I'm not going to put myself out as an expert on ADUs. I did a 30-page discussion paper on them from Hillsborough County, Florida, 13 years ago. And I think the schedule here is dangerously fast-tracking. We have, ADUs are fairly new in Illinois, but they're very common and old-school all over the country. And I would certainly urge that the village and CMAP not look just at places in Illinois that have recently adopted ordinances, but look at cities that have mature ADU ordinances going back 20 and 30 years. And I would recommend particularly Santa Cruz, California, Portland, Oregon, and Walla Walla, Washington. They have an extensive track record with these, so you know, Mr. Dombrowski asked, are there organizations that have opposed these? Or Frank asked, I forget which one, well, and what negative effects they might have. These cities, planning departments will be able to tell you what negative effects ADUs have had, if any. They also will be able to tell you what the CMAP people have told you, and Sarah and Craig have told you there's not going to be a flood here in Illinois. You should be aware however, that in Los Angeles, there is a flood of applications, since the state made ADUs legal statewide. And they have had thousands of applications, but we're talking about a city of, what, four or five million people? Very different than River Forest, but don't look just at the local ordinances. You've got to look at these ordinances in cities that have had ADUs for decades. You'll have a real track record. I think you also need to realize, we need much more extensive discussion within the community. Not structured within the concept or structure and restraints of a public hearing. But serious discussions, because as you could tell from the comments from one member of the ZBA, there's reluctance for this. Now, I'm going to tell you from what I learned from, and you guys have expanded my knowledge tremendously, from the discussion paper I did 13 years ago, there are a ton of factors to take into consideration, and you need community buy-in to do this. So there's a lot of community education that needs to be done. But we need to inventory what we have, because there are coach houses here that people are living in. So let's find out what legal non-conforming uses are in existence here. You're going to have to look at minimum size of the property, which zoning districts, the various standard questions that Jake raised, but also design standards, spacing or density limits. You don't necessarily want to have house, you know, you may have a block where everyone wants to put in a coach house, you might not really want that. We have the complication with parking. While Evanston and Oak Park do allow to some extent on-street parking overnight, River Forest does not allow on-street parking overnight. So you've got to evaluate what that will mean if you build a coach house or do an interior ADU. Like the rents, size of the ADUs, a ton of things that have to be considered that on this schedule, it's impossible to do the proper amount of research. Also, you need to be aware that the Fair Housing Act, with all due respect Craig, does not apply with an ADU because of the Mrs. Murphy exception to the Fair Housing Act. An owner-occupied structures of four units or less, the Fair Housing Act is not applicable. It's an exemption to the Fair Housing Act. I know it's crazy, but that's the way it was written back in 1968 and has not been changed. So I would urge the ZBA and I would urge the staff to slow-track this a bit. Get a whole hell of a lot more information from cities that have mature ADA ordinances and have years and years of experience, and don't rely just on ordinances from Illinois. That's one of the reasons why the inclusionary zoning ordinances in Illinois are really so weak. They didn't look at the close to 1,000 cities around the country that have had these, some of which like Montgomery County, Maryland have had them for 40 years. So let's not be so provincial. And I would encourage the folks at CMAP to look at these other cities with the mature experiences. We've got to be, people here are going to want evidence. And let's get evidence from cities that have had more than two or three years' experience, but have had decades of experience with ADUs. Thank you.
So Lisa, can you tell us, I think you said we were under contract with CMP, CMAP, is that correct?
We are.
And when does, what's the length of that contract? Are you, is the village trying to cram this, this discussion within a, you know, a, what period of time?
We have some flexibility, we would need to mutually agree to extend certain dates. I think we wanted to come up with a framework and a plan to start moving forward. Obviously, we move at the pace that the community directs us to move. And so that would be a discussion I think we would have to go back and have with CMAP.
What's the contract, what's, what's the termination date of the contract currently?
It's, we can extend it out. So it, we have a charter that contemplates this schedule, but if we need to extend it out, we can.
So the current contract expires sometime at the end of August, is that what you're saying?
I'd have to pull the contract up in front of me, but no, I mean, it, it's got, and this is a point that we went back and forth on a little bit, that if we needed to extend the dates with CMAP, we could. So we have that flexibility within the contract to be able to do it.
Would that cost additional money from the village?
If we need CMAP staff to come back and attend additional meetings, we may have to pay additional fees. But right now, the village's cost, CMAP is funding a portion of the program, the village's share is $1,200 at this point. So we're willing to invest what we need to make this right.
What's, what's the, the longest date to which the CMAP contract can be extended?
Jacob, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's up to five years.
That's correct.
Yeah.
You know, I agree with Dan, which you don't hear me say very often. But I, I think that this is of utmost importance to the village. I don't think that this is something that could be crammed between now and August 23rd. I think that the, the village is obligated to publicize that this process has even begun. I think that I, I, I think that some of these ideas that have been talked about tonight are just wrong, plain wrong. I mean, how can you, how can you have another living unit and, and not require any more parking spaces? I mean, so I, I, I think the village needs to undertake an education campaign to let the residents know what's, what's going on. And I think that there should, there should, you know, we, we are liable to have several hearings that are going to overflow this room when the residents realize, you know, what the, the potential is if, if an ordinance is adopted that permits a second dwelling unit on a single-family lot. Especially if this, if either the primary residence or the ADU could be rented to a non-relative. I mean, you, you raised a question about, you know, are there impact fees? You know, what does this do, how, how does that, that portion of our ordinance that requires a deposit for schools? You know, how, how, how does that, you know, we're going to have somebody tell us that it's all for, all people my age and, and we don't have children anymore. I, I, I really think that, that the village is going to do a great disservice if this whole concept isn't publicized. And is, you know, there, there are opportunities for the residents to come before us. And I think this is a bad time of year to start this whole thing. Because school's going to be out pretty soon, and, and July and August are, are traditional vacation months. And, you know, how can we have public hearings in July and August when people are out of town? I, that, that's just, I, I think that's just not the right way to, to operate.
Thank you for the feedback.
Joanna, is there anything you want, you would like to?
Yeah, I think my concerns are actually different than yours. I wonder how many affordable housing units we'd even gain from this. I, I'm not convinced that people would rent outside of their families. My personal lot, I, I'm covered, I couldn't, even if I wanted my parents to come and live with me, couldn't build something. I wonder how many units we'd actually be able to offer up. I'm not sure that this gets us very far in our goal of adding affordable housing.
Maybe the village could, should, could even, you know, survey, how many, how many lots are there in the village where a standalone ADU could be built?
Right, so that's something we've already explored with CMAP. And the one thing I want to underline, and Frank, I hear your comments, and certainly the village wants to make sure we have opportunities for ample public comment. You know, the schedule is not intended to prohibit that, and so I hear your point. And we can have as many conversations as we need to have. I think it is important to note that this was an outgrowth of the Affordable Housing Plan. And that there were opportunities for public comment there. And this was one of the recommendations that came as a result of those discussions. So this is something that has been in the community. This is something that was a part of the Affordable Housing Plan. So to the extent that we need to have additional conversations, I, I'm certainly not going to say no to any of that, that would not be appropriate. But I, I just want to underline the fact that this has been in the public previously. And that this was something that was recommended by the Plan Commission and the Village Board of Trustees when the Affordable Housing Plan was adopted. It wasn't a mandate that ADUs be allowed, but it was a requirement that ADUs and that the zoning code be amended to consider these. So, so I just wanted to point that out.
So do we need to set another meeting, another firm meeting date? Or it sounds like we can wait on that?
Well, the next meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals is June 10th. What I would like to do is keep that meeting as possible. I think there's additional information, I would like to have additional direction from a quorum of the ZBA regarding any additional research that needs to be done. We can certainly get started on the things that we've heard tonight. There's a lot to be done and that, I'm looking forward to doing it, there's a lot to learn here. But I would like to try to keep the June meeting so that we can begin, or we can continue to move the process along. And I will check to see too, if there's any public hearings that are already held that night. I'll find out.
DRB I think is June 3rd.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dan?
Yes, I would like to request that you keep the age-friendly, ad hoc age-friendly committee informed of these meetings, since ADUs are something that our committee is looking at. And frankly, the committee should have been invited to this meeting and should be invited to and notified of all meetings involving ADUs. And, and I don't know what happened, but this meeting was not on the ZBA's page on the village website. I learned about it an hour before the meeting started, when someone called to tell me it was on the calendar. But it wasn't on the ZBA's page, I, I didn't even know this was coming up. So there was some sort of oversight there.
Dan, I'm respectfully, Dan, I disagree, this was posted a so time ago. We notified people, or we, we posted on the website that the March, I'm sorry, May 13th meeting was canceled. And posted this meeting much farther in advance.
Lisa, it's on the calendar, it's not on the ZBA's page, I've got screenshots. I checked the page a few days ago, because I thought there was going to be a meeting there, and it showed the next meeting was June 10th. It somehow got left off the ZBA's page.
All right, fortunately, you overcame that, you overcame that, Dan, and you were here tonight. So, you know, we're not, we're not making, this, this was an initial hearing to educate us about the how to go about and the benefits of ADUs. But that's all we're doing tonight is, is listening to this presentation. So our next meeting, what do you anticipate on the agenda for the next meeting about this matter?
Well, what I would plan to do after the meeting is make a copy of CMAP's presentation and a recording of the meeting available on the village's website. I would invite all of the members of the ZBA who were unable to attend tonight's meeting to watch the presentation or to watch the meeting, to view the presentation, so that we can continue the conversation and start pulling together some of those initial research pieces. We can pull together the ordinances, I was just looking at Evanston has a great guide to ADUs within their community. And pulling some of those additional reading materials together. So we can certainly get that out to the Zoning Board of Appeals in advance. We'll attach it to your meeting packet so that the public has access to all of those documents. CMAP had some initial survey and research points in their presentation tonight. We can collect those and we can continue to build out a survey answering some of the questions and showing some comparison and contrast. Dan, I appreciate the comments about the more mature zoning ordinances, we'll certainly look into those as well. We're not opposed to taking a look outside of the state of Illinois. Any zoning regs, I'll, I'll let, you know, Greg weigh in as to what might be unique to Illinois versus what's happening elsewhere, because that's not my expertise. But we can begin to pull all of that together.
And Lisa, if I may, you know, with the out-of-town examples, Jamie and I have done copious amounts of research on the examples outside of Illinois. But places like Florida and on the west coast have a much different situation when it comes to affordable housing and the provision of housing out there. They're in a much bigger housing crunch. And so the, you know, the examples don't really always add up, it's kind of an apples and oranges situation. So we intentionally chose to look at communities in Illinois. So that the zoning board of appeals and the village board would have something to go off of. We don't want to bog you down in so much data that you can't make a decision.
Well, I think, I think you can leave that to us. If you give us the data, we can determine what we think is relevant.
Absolutely.
And, and perhaps, I, I know the village president sends out periodic And perhaps, I know the village president sends out periodic emails to the residents, and perhaps it would be a good idea, in one of the upcoming emails, you know, to let the village residents know that this matter is under discussion. I mean, the fact that it was part of the Affordable Housing Act and the fact that the Housing Act, the Affordable Housing Act was adopted a year ago, I bet there's not 10% of the people in the village that have any idea that this is under discussion at this time. So, any other, any, any other comments, Lisa, that you want to make?
No, thanks, Rick.
CMAP people, or anything else you want to tell us?
Well, it sounds like we've got a lot to talk about, but I think that's it for tonight.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
It's been our pleasure, thank you.
All right, so we could, Joanna, Jerry, got anything else that you want to add?
No.
I think this is a, we didn't have hearings before on the Affordable Housing Act. I think those were all done at the Plan Commission. I don't know if anybody goes to the Plan Commission hearings, but I think that, you know, this is something that we need to publicize, and we need to make sure that as many residents of the village as possible are aware that this is under consideration.
I just, I think I've already said this, but I'd be curious to know how many people could add an accessory dwelling unit and how many already have one existing in River Forest? And maybe in Evanston or Oak Park, who's renting those to someone outside of their family? How many, how often that ends up being the case?
Sure, we can see what kind of data is out there, and I'll ask CMAP to kind of help me with some of this stuff. I know one of the things that we started talking about a little bit was looking at different property surveys in River Forest in the different zoning districts to give you an idea of what ADUs within those zoning districts would look like. And so one of the other things I want to dig into too is looking into the R1, R2, R3 zoning districts in particular, and looking at what properties have structures on them that are built to capacity in terms of FAR, floor area ratio, lot coverage, looking at the number of detached garages in the community. Obviously, there's quite a few. And so just going through and trying to pull some of that data to the extent that I can using our existing system. So may have to get a little creative with how we research it, but we'll certainly provide the most complete data set that we possibly can.
I think that's right, I think we.
Yeah, that's fair. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion to dismiss? A motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Jerry seconds. All in favor is aye. Thanks for coming tonight, people.
Thank you, everybody.
Jacob and Jamie, we'll regroup next week and talk.
Sounds good. Thanks so much, everyone. Have a good night.